People know that what we're going to do is, I know, I've got them in the room, is that we're going to spend one hour on this. Our goal is to spend one hour. And so, and our goal is to determine the next steps of the school board going forward because we have made a commitment to having something to vote on on the 22nd of June.
So I'm sorry, we're hoping to develop motions, at least some principles for motions for the 22nd.
Correct. Okay. Next steps. And I am, I am going to wait for my meeting co-manager to sit to the table and I'm going to peek in that door again and suggest people come on out.
So I'm going to wait until my co-meeting manager can show up to the table and then we're going to get started.
We do this well together, don't we? One of the things that I love about working with Mr. Wilson is that he always brings not only wisdom but cheer. So thank you.
Give that man a cappy.
Okay. So I think we do have enough. If I can see a, yes, Mrs. Strauss.
Okay. I can't resolve exactly where we're going from here, but I can, I'm prepared to share my thoughts. I've thought about this for a very long time. So, what I believe and what I don't believe. First, I don't think we can get into the minds of the school board of the time in the 1950s. We certainly, and I have read all the things that people wrote and I, my own history studies and understanding, I am not into re-debating the Civil War or what happened. So I'm not going back. It's important that we go forward. And I also am not interested, I'm interested in the conversation being limited to Stewart. I am not prepared to go down some sort of slippery slope. Northern Virginia in Virginia is what it is. And I agree that we have a lot of important historic figures, Washington, Jefferson, what have you, and they just simply are important figures. So, and I'm not questioning their lives or their participation. They are appropriately honored. On the other hand, I also welcome the opportunity when we can name schools after people who we can hold up as heroes for our students. I was very pleased to be able to help bring forward the name of Ludi Lewis Coats, which is the newest elementary school in Dransville. She was a much-regarded black educator who worked at Luther Jackson, who taught in a colored school, and her family actually owned a good deal of the land where Coats is. So I was very pleased that we could honor her with that name. I was also on the school board at the time where we were faced with the opportunity to sell Luther Jackson to ExxonMobil. And on the board at the time, we said, no, Luther Jackson has an important place in the history of Fairfax County Public Schools, including segregation. It was the first black high school. So we've kept that school there and it needs to be there. That story needs to be told. My own children's school, which was Franklin Sherman, until I was a little uncomfortable, I wondered who was Franklin Sherman. He was, he was on the school board in the early 1900s. And we found, after doing a lot of research, after the Civil War Franklin Sherman agreed to be sheriff for the county, but he resigned when he was asked to flog a black woman in the street and he said, I will not. And that gave me something to be proud of for my own children's school. So, I would like to change the name of Jeb Stewart. And there are a range of ideas that I have had over time and I don't know where my colleagues are. McLean High School, a nice Klan name. Would people be willing to drop the Jeb part and just give it Stewart? I don't know. Barbara Johns is a young woman who was courageous during the 1950s. And I think she is a heroine who could be celebrated for our students. It is interesting to see what Enrico County has done. I also read the speech of Miralandro in New Orleans. So, I am willing to change the name of Jeb Stewart. I'm willing to consider a range of approaches to that. I don't want to ask our boosters or our PTSA at Stewart to bear some huge cost if the board decides to change a name. So, I'm willing to listen and see where we are with this. And I was one of the people two years ago who spoke with some of the young students at Stewart, began the process of asking, could we change the name? And I told them at the time, I would be interested and I still am. But it would be great if we could find a solution that somehow helps to bring everybody together. I also believe the school board needs to make a decision in the next couple of weeks or a month. This is, we cannot drag this out. We have asked the committee, then they've worked very hard and I think they've worked honorably to come to a solution. And so we have two views, two opposing views. I don't think there was a cumbaya moment there and I can acknowledge that. So I think the school board has to make a decision and go on. So, those are my thoughts and I will listen to everybody else. There was a slave in my own family, though I feel that.
I'm not going to be as direct as Mrs. Strauss at this point in time, but I can share with my colleagues and the community where I am today. I was prepared to vote on the issue last time this motion came up, I think going back to, was it July or June of 2016? The motion to inform an ad hoc committee and task ad hoc committee to study certain issues and bring daily reports to the school board by supposedly initially, I think there was March of 2017. Now we are in June. I was prepared to vote at the time. But at this point in time, I'm going to give a, because I want to be fair, as I think because I made a promise, you know, a number of weeks ago when, you know, people on the both sides of this debate contacted me to speak with me, meet with me and speak with me. I said, I'm going to wait until the committees do their work, present their reports, and only after that would I meet with them. And I'm expecting to meet with both sides within a week. I have a meeting scheduled with one group on this Wednesday. I'm waiting to, you know, set up a time with the other side, you know, hopefully, hopefully within a week and give both sides an equal opportunity. I said, I would say maximum 45 minutes to educate me further if there's anything they need to educate on me this issue. I'm sure that there are a lot of things I need to hear more, you know, on this issue. So that's where I am as far as meeting with the community groups are concerned. Today happens to be a 50th anniversary of the Supreme Court decision in the case of Loving versus Virginia, going back to 1967. I have two younger sister who are married to a man with a different race, I should say. I mean, if, you know, had a, you know, if they were a little older, I said, much older, if they had tried to do that more than 50 years ago in Virginia, that would not have been possible. So I'm keeping that in mind, keeping that in my mind. I mean, I, you know, I certainly understand about the argument, but I think this is a new terminology I learned earlier just today, was presentism, presentist, you know, looking at what happened in the past from the viewpoint of the present. I certainly, I am certainly mindful of that. But at the same time, I'm also be mindful of there being, if I want to use the adverb or adjective, only 35% of the community supporting change of the name. I gotta say that maybe prior to 1967 or well before 1967, the decision of Loving versus Virginia, majority of Americans, if they were surveyed, whether they believed in not mixing the blood amongst the different races? And should we have just followed the survey interest of the majority of Americans back then to make the decisions? Or whether they would have been a right decision to make? But as elected officials, do we ignore the, what the community wants you to do as elected officials in 2017? Is it 2017 same as 1967 or prior to that? I don't know. And also, I was considering my own family that, you know, you know, some of my colleagues do know that my father was born in North Korea. He came down to South during Korean War. He fled north, no, he did not flee north. He was actually told by his mother to go to South because mother did not want to lose 17-year-old, oldest son of the three boys to be taken to the battlefield and get killed because that was what was happening back then. You get sent to the battlefield, you get killed. So that is why the age of those being enlisted was becoming younger and younger. He was 17. It was just a matter of time, he was going to be taken to the battlefield and get killed. So, my grandmother told him to go to South for a few days and then would be able to come back home. Came to South, he was too hungry, so hungry that he had to join South Korean Army to fight the North. His brothers up in North because he was hungry. And there was a December of 1950 and it's been 60, 70 years, he has never been able to go back home, not knowing whereabouts of his family members. That's a tragedy of another Civil War, North and South, in my native country of Korea. And I am really, I sincerely praying for the unification of the Korean Peninsula before my father passes away so that he can go home and go to Himsa, you know, his hometown and see whether his younger brothers are leaving, whether he has nieces and nephews up in North, whether I have cousins up in North. I want to be able to escort him. Then, up in North, whether he would be considered a traitor because he came to South and fought on the side of South against North. He was trying to avoid hunger at the time and he wanted to go home all his life. After the unification of Korean Peninsula, name, issues of names, all these names will come up. There's a famous university up in Pyongyang, Confederacy of North Korea, Pyongyang, Kim Ilseong University. Kim Ilseong was the founder of the communist North Korea. How the unification is going to affect the name of those universities and buildings named after communist leaders? Assuming that the unified Korea will be under democratic form of government as opposed to totalitarian or communist rule, assuming that, how that's going to affect? So I've been thinking about this because that's so personal to me. My father being possibly being treated as a traitor up in North might have been treated as a traitor all these years and his, you know, mother and two younger brothers might have been persecuted exactly because of that. But he joined South Korean Army already because he was hungry, nothing more than that. So, what Jeb Stewart did, why did he resign from Union Army and join the Confederacy and fought on the side of South? I want to give myself a little more time and give an opportunity to those two opposing committees. So tell me what I need to know. I want to hear from them before I make up my mind.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. That certainly puts context into a present-day situation, so we appreciate you sharing that with us. Ms. McLaughlin.
So I was actually prepared to wait, let other people speak, but I think this is a topic that, there's a little bit of hesitation right now, so I didn't want us to have a vacant lull here. It's actually helpful to be going right after Mr. Moon because I woke up this morning to the NPR story about the 50th anniversary of Loving versus Virginia. And it was powerful to think about the year that I was born is the year that our Supreme Court finally told Virginia and 14 other states that it is unlawful to prevent couples from different races from being able to marry. My youngest sister was married to an African-American. Her son is biracial, my nephew. And when I think about the fact that I came into the world where we were finally saying to our community and our societies around the country that we're not going to create barriers for love, that's, that's what that case embodied and it certainly is something that I think about when I think about my nephew, Alexander. So, this issue obviously is complex. The community has wrestled with it for over two years. And it's really come to the board's attention last year when we were asked, are we ready to, to vote? And I want to thank Ms. Kofax again for coming up with what I thought was the appropriate action of the board, which was that we needed more dialogue and research and understanding about where we are on this issue. Some of my colleagues know this, but maybe the public doesn't. I do have a bachelor's degree in American history. One of my best professors, who was African-American, taught me in Civil War and Reconstruction. And I have found the public dialogue on this issue about Jeb Stewart, about Robert E. Lee, about the Confederacy, about the North, somewhat troubling because not only as a history major, but also someone who has a master's degree in social work, I know that almost any issue, whether you take a human being, whether you take an event, you cannot distill it down to its simplest terms without understanding the complexity. I do appreciate that Jeb Stewart has a complicated past. I do understand that people looking at who would decide to resign their commission as an American and then decide to fight for the Northern Virginia Army. But going back to the presentism versus the past, I wasn't alive in 1860s to be able to understand the infancy still of the United States as bloody and awful and the loss of lives in the North and the South and everything that took place. It did make us a stronger union because people finally understood what it meant to be a union. And I will forever support the learning of history. But this board, we're here in 2017. And as a woman who less than 100 years ago, this country said was not equipped to vote, thank God, I'm now living in a day where that prejudice is gone. And so I'm being asked to make a decision now in 2017. As the landscape of our county, the landscape of our community is becoming more diverse, how do we as school board members look at the name of our school and does it create that warm and welcome environment for all students? And the surveys, as a side note, those are troubling to me. I really appreciate, I think it was Mr. Longmire who said, that is a skill. It absolutely is a skill and a bad survey can do more damage than no survey at all. The litmus test of what percentage do we need that survey to tell us where the community is on it before we take action? Again, look at where our country is in presidential elections. I mean razor-thin decision-making. So trying to think that we might actually find as complex of an issue of how we look at the name Jeb Stewart High School and expect that we're going to see an overwhelming consensus, I think can be very challenging too. I really appreciate Ms. Strauss, how you captured where you are right now. And as, again, someone who has wrestled with the rhetoric and last Thursday night's citizen participation speeches, I will tell you as a social worker, I found deeply troubling. I don't want any of the ad hoc committee members, whether you feel we should change the name, whether you feel we should preserve the name, no one should be demonized. I think everyone who has come to this issue has come to it with the greatest of care. And while they might see the different merits on each side, I will tell you as a, again, someone who has studied history, I am not ever prepared to call Jeb Stewart a traitor or a terrorist. Yes, he was a Confederate officer and we have to think about in 2017, is he appropriate to hold the honor of one of our high school names? And that's the one I want to have the conversation with our community on and with our, with our colleagues. I asked earlier today, and some of you heard, what have other school systems around the country done? I want to use that as a framework because I don't want this community divided. This country got divided 150 years ago and we've watched our, our now Jeb Stewart community be torn apart. And so we as a board need to be leaders on how we do this. The second thing is cost. Ms. Strauss, thank you for bringing that up. As someone who's married to an athletic booster president, having been a former PTA board member and president, the last thing I would ever expect is for the Jeb Stewart community to hold the fiscal responsibility for this. If the board determines that this is the right change to make, then the board needs to determine how we will finance that change. But it does not come on the pressures of the athletic boosters, the PTAs and the other tremendous supporters that we have at Jeb Stewart. And finally to my colleague, Ms. Kofax, I am not at all naive at how particularly difficult this issue is because I believe what we do with Jeb Stewart will certainly set a precedent and it will set expectations. And so I would ask my colleagues that while we know this has been hard for the community, I do not feel we're prepared to vote for this in two weeks. I shared this with Ms. Evans yesterday. If whatever action we take, we need to do it well. And we need to ensure that our community understands not only the action we're taking and why we take it, but how we're going to execute on it. And right now, our policies that should always drive our decisions are not clear and we need to make sure those policies are clear. And I believe Ms. Corbett Sanders, you will help flesh out some of what I'm speaking to now in terms of good policy. But I do want to echo what was said earlier to all of our community members who have been engaged in this issue, regardless as a keeper or as a changer. I want to thank you for your passion and for your commitment to doing what you feel is so important and to really ask what I know Ms. Evans said earlier, please be civil, please model for our children what it means to have difficult conversations, but ones that invoke respect for one another. Because I, I think that is what has made this more painful than really it ought to have been.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mrs. Hines, please.
Yeah, thank you. So, just, just a couple of thoughts. It's interesting, this notion of presentism, I don't think we've talked about it before as a board and now we're talking about it a lot. But I worry about the label, I think I understand the concept, but I worry that the label of presentism risks dismissing the reality for a lot of people today of certain things. And I think it also risks dismissing our obligation to consider this in the context of today. And I do believe we can teach the history of the Confederacy without naming schools for Confederate heroes. I think we can understand our history without putting Confederate heroes on pedestals and on the sides of buildings. So I think it's possible for us to be both in the present and observe and respect the past. For the sake of the school community, I, last year, wanted us to vote on this, up or down. I wanted us to say, I wanted us to say yes. It's important to change the name and let's spend the next several months figuring out how we do that. You know, a majority of the board was not ready to go there, but I think part of my reason for wanting to do it at that time is because, now, you know, Sandy Evans and I, I was chair and Sandy was vice chair at the time, that we were talking, this was coming to us and there were a lot of conversations and, you know, we did, because we were chair and vice chair, I think we had a lot more conversations with school system leadership maybe than we would have otherwise. And we were hearing from school system leadership that this was going to be tough for the school community to continue to talk about this. But, you know, a majority of the board was not ready to do that. And so we took this past year, as we all know, and I, I think it has been tough. I think it has been distracting and challenging for the school community to have this conversation. But I have to hand it to staff and the, the community members who worked on it. We do now have a hard one, significant and helpful work product to move forward with. So I do appreciate that. I think we need to move forward with the Jeb Stewart decision now. I, I think postponing it anymore is, is not respectful of the community. I think we've put them through enough. I think we owe the community that. I also think the work that they've done will help us flesh out the compelling need criteria that we have that we've never really fleshed out. And I, you know, for my own sake, I think that we have shown a compelling need to change this school's name. But I also would say that I, I agree with the worries that people have about where does this end, the domino effect, you know, is this really just about one school? So I, you know, I would suggest that we make the decision about Jeb Stewart and then even have a, just throwing it out there, a moratorium on additional name changes until we can flesh out criteria about compelling need and develop a process going forward. And I think the work that this, you know, citizen committee has done can help us do that. I mean, we have examples in the, in the appendices of what other systems have done, what universities have done, what communities have done. I think we could come up with some criteria going forward. But I would not like us to put a hold on Jeb Stewart. I feel like we've put the community through a lot. I feel like the community's done a lot of good work and we have enough information I feel like the community's done a lot of good work and we have enough information and a compelling need, I think at this point, to move forward on it. I think the, the choice of the name, the schedule of the change and the cost of the change are things that we can work on in the next few months with deliberate speed. But I don't think we need to make those decisions this month. But I, I do think we need to honor the work of, of, of the community and the need of the community for us to make a decision and move on.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Schultz?
It looks like anybody else is speaking. So I'm pretty sure, I'm not, I think, I think that maybe, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm the only person here that's made a motion or seconded a motion to rename a school. Mr. Stork and I did it in 2012 to South County Middle School.
That was to name a school?
Well, it was really renaming a school because it was a secondary school and we built a new building and, you know, the question was to rename it. And so, and, and the funny thing, Ms. McLaughlin, you happened to bring up suffragettes because Mr. Stork and I desperately wanted to name, or really wanted the community to name the school for a historical figure. And because of the proximity of Lorton, we worked really hard, you know, to engage. And there was a question about the survey instrument that was used and whether it went to all the right people. And so we stopped the process even though we were ready to vote. And we sent staff back again because we didn't exactly get what we wanted and asked that they reinvigorate the effort to engage the community again and survey the community again. And, you know, I, I said, let's, you know, have Lucy Burns or Alice Paul. And then it was, oh no, they were militant. You can't have somebody who is militant. So even in, in the context of a suffragette, there was a, a presentism attributed to them that wasn't just being a suffragette. It wasn't good enough that they were a suffragette, they were also militant. So we couldn't possibly name, I mean, these, these women were Quakers. So, but they were also, they'd picked up some tactics from, you know, their, their British peers across the pond and it was militant to fight Woodrow Wilson of all people. I mean, you know, the irony of how this all comes to play. And in the end, the community said that they didn't care that we were interested in sort of upholding the Board's policy of naming buildings after historical figures and particularly relevant to Virginia history. And they went with South County Middle School. And to this day, I think they're wrong, but they love their name and they're, they're South County stallions. And every time I think about it, I think she wouldn't have been nice. But we didn't do that. You know, conversely, as I mentioned earlier, you know, I, I think Rachel Carson at middle school frankly is an abomination. And, and I think it's an abomination because I think about the millions of children who died from malaria and we've got a school building honoring her name. And I think she was maybe well-intended at the time, but I think in retrospect and history and context, you know, maybe that's not so wise. You know, as, as poverty-stricken areas of the planet, you know, suffer tremendously with this, with this terrible disease. So I'm looking at if it's about being accurate with history, and still trying to figure out what this is about, because we could have decided this a year ago. So this is not a question about timing, because if we wanted it to be swift and give the community an answer, we could have decided. And we didn't. The Board didn't. I didn't vote to extend it. I, I agree with Ms. Hines that I was ready to vote a year ago and give the community an answer. But if this is about the accuracy of history, because even today in the presentations, I heard, you know, Mr. Moon asked some good questions about, you know, what are the facts that are in dispute? And, and the question of what is history? And are we doing this because history has telling us that this is a, a certain story that doesn't prove accurate over time? Then I say you refer to George Mason. And because really what, as I understood the Board's original intent in referring this was maybe to get something different than we got. Now, I, I can't say I'm surprised at what we got, but we, when we struggled with what to do about student discipline, you know, we had really strong voices in the community, on staff, in school buildings that were at really disparate places on, on restorative justice and how you meet the needs of children. And in the end, we got one report with 52 recommendations that this Board, and it was 180 whatever, 180 some odd pages. But it was a single report, there was staff, FCPS staff to help us through those. This is sort of the two sides of produced report and put it on our plates. And I, I'm not sure that we're particularly more informed about what to do. And maybe, Ms. McLaughlin, that's a little bit what you were headed toward of, you know, what are the best practices that are out there? So if it's about history, then I say you take George Mason up on their offer and, and we get a, a historical interpretation. If it's not about history, and it's about what I was asking the committee members about earlier, if it's about compelling need, you know, AKA a moral imperative, then you can't have it both ways and say, well, you get to put a moratorium on and delay all the others and we figure out yet another process. Because we keep moving goalposts. You know, we had a goalpost, it moved. We had another goalpost, it moved. We had a timeline, it moved. We had a, why are we doing this? It moved. So I think back to when we originally, originally began this conversation, which is what is this about? If it's a moral imperative and a compelling need, then you have to rip the Band-Aid off and you have to do them all and you have to do everything. You can't just say, well, we get to just change the marquee out front and then everybody else, don't look at anything else inside the building or infrastructure changes that have to happen or uniform changes that have to happen. Because if it's a moral imperative, then it's moral. To do otherwise is immoral. But if it's a mo, if it's a moral issue, are we saying that 65% of the people who voted the kids are immoral? And that's where I think this, this decision has to be very, very careful. Because if, if, if this is to, Mr. Moon on your part and Mr. Wilson, you brought this up, is there no threshold at which it's either too high to ignore or too low to ignore? If it's 10% who voted to change the name, is that too low and you get to dismiss it? And what we heard was basically, there's no number, it's, it's a moral issue. Well, if there's no number and it's a moral issue, then you get to dismiss, you, you can't dismiss their feelings. So if it's about feelings, if it's, if it's not history and it's not a moral imperative and it's about feelings, now we're, we're being, we're being placed in the judicial seat of evaluating and voting whose feelings matter more. That's a very dangerous place, I think, for this Board to be if all of this hinges on feelings. Because what you're going to say in whatever ultimate vote is, I have decided, I am judge and jury, and I decide that your feelings are more important than somebody else's feelings. And that's a very uncomfortable governing seat to be put into. Because had I been able to do that in April of 2012, my feelings were more important than South County's feelings on the fact that we should have named South County after a historical figure. Except that's not the way it works. The way it works is we are supposed to listen to the community, we are supposed to gather a, a compendium of voices and in the end, make the wisest decision that is the tax, the, the public schools for the public's benefit with the public's money. And the public at that point said, no, we don't want a suffragette, no, we don't want somebody Virginia historical, no, we don't want Dr. Seuss. I mean, you know, all the, you remember all the different choices that we had available to us. We want something that is important to us and for them, it was South County. And the information that has been presented by the community by whether they engaged or not, homeowners associations, civic associations, any kind of a community group did not engage to say, we want this school's name changed, but the surveys were done. So I'm at the position where if it's, if it's about history and we want to put a dipstick in to say, what's the accurate history, that I, I favor a referral to George Mason. On student discipline, as hard as that was, we gave ourselves well over a month to, to, to sort through a single compendium of 52 recommendations and work with staff. So I don't feel that on, you said one hour, a one, a one-hour discussion after a, a presentation that I fought to get, you know, people from the Community Committee here to even present to us, I don't think on an hour, I can hear the report, have a discussion with my colleagues and come to a decision and vote in two weeks. I think that that's, that, that is a, a rapid end to a, a problem that this Board created by not voting a year ago. And I'm not prepared to double down on, you know, making another bad agenda decision.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Evans, please.
Thank you. I, I will agree with Mrs. Schultz that it would have been better to have made our fundamental decision on this a year ago. I, I certainly was prepared to do it a year ago as well, but I understand the Board feeling that we needed more time. My hope a year ago was that we could have made a decision and if the decision was to move forward, to have a year to discuss how. Again, we, we decided not to do that and I, I certainly respect the, the reasons behind the feeling that we needed to do more public engagement, more of an exploration of the pros and cons, more of an exploration of the costs associated with it. And so we, we have gotten more information from, from both sides. You know, we now have a very extensive report from both sides and hopefully that gives people more comfort in making a decision. And I use comfort loosely because this will not be a comfortable decision at the end of the day. It will be a difficult decision, but it is one that we have to make. We have to make it and we have to make a decision affirmatively yes or no. We cannot push this off anymore. I think it's very unfair to the school. The, the school has been dealing with this for more than two years. The community's been dealing with it for more than two years. So if our answer to the community is no, we need to tell them no. If the answer to the community is yes, we need to tell them yes and move forward. As, to my mind, what is a compelling need? That's something that we have all been grappling with. And to, the, the young people who came to me more than two years ago felt very strongly that, that the name of their school was inappropriate, that it was offensive. And I, I did take a significant amount of time to talk with them to, I got many, many emails through the course of that first, first year before we, we grappled with this fully as a Board, although we did talk about how one would go about renaming the school. We had that conversation during that first year. And I will say, we, whatever the School Board of 1958 and 1959 was thinking when they named the school Jeb Stuart, and we can't really know. You know, in, in those days, they did a, a lot of their action, they, it was legal, you know, to do more behind closed doors than we can do now. So the record is very, very, very slim on where they were coming from when they made this decision about Jeb Stuart. So we can't really determine exactly what they were thinking, but we can make a decision today. We as a Board today have to decide whether this is an appropriate name for a Fairfax County High School. And to my mind, having listened to both sides for two years now, I believe it is not. I believe that it is actively offensive to enough of our community that it should be changed. I thought that a year ago and I made that clear to my community. So I did take a position. At this point, I, I don't think we do this by survey. I, I'm not saying that the survey was wrong. You know, our surveys are our surveys. We know they're not scientific surveys, but we take them to get a pulse of the community. And that's, we can say that it's the pulse of the community. Now, was there enough saturation? Well, no, there wasn't. You know, Calmore was very thinly represented. Skyline was very thinly represented. And those are the, some of the highest poverty areas in the Stewart community. Now, would their, their answer have been different? I have no way of knowing. I don't know. Would they have been more opposed? Would they have been more supportive? I don't know as a, as a full community because we didn't have that saturation. But be that as it may, to have, if, if we were to believe the figures, to have 35% of a school community say, we should change that name, that's a significant number. That's a significant number. And I don't think that we would find that really at any other school in Fairfax County. I could be wrong because we haven't surveyed, but I... So is there a compelling need? I think there is. But more to the point, this Board has to make a decision and we have to make it now. We can't go into another school year without a decision. So what I was hoping to get out of today's conversation was what is our motion on June 22nd? What's our motion? Is it to change the name or is it to not change the name? And I, I think at, now's the time for us to decide that. So I hope that members of this Board, having read 1,000 pages of reports, having thought about this for a year, or in my case, two years, that we will make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Dornick Kofax.
Thank you. The reason we did not make a decision a year ago and the reason I put forward my motion was to put forward a compromise that would allow the community dialogue to continue rather than end, end the, and, and come with a vote at last time. The community I felt was torn apart and I was hopeful that after a year of dialogue, we would come together much in the way that we have on other opposing issues, one that Ms. Schultz, one that Ms. Schultz mentioned, when we came to the opposing side of school discipline, when the opposing sides of school disciplinary issues came together and brought forward to us recommendations. But even with the community's very, very hard work, and I do appreciate that, this did not happen. The, the data that exists out there, everybody can use data the way they, they, they want to, but I don't think the data of the 65% or 60% in three different surveys can be ignored. I have a, I am, we are policymakers and the way we react to one issue and/or, or the way we use our policy to, to deal with an issue does have ramifications down the road. My regional assistant superintendent, my principal are telling me they are getting calls on a daily basis about Lee High School and the need to change that for the same reasons. It's a moral imperative. It's a moral imperative. It must be done. I've had conversations with the broader community, meaning members of the boards of supervisors, talking to them about what can we do as a community? Can we, we talk about this in a broader sense? And while I appreciate the desire to check a box and move on because this is difficult, this is painful, this is not something that, this is something that is difficult for the community rather than pleasant, I am very concerned about the need to check a box and move on when what's out there right now is a very split community. Making a decision either way will inflict bad feelings and will not be productive, I believe, for the community at this time. Can we do something broader as, you know, I guess one of the reports referenced, I'm sorry I wasn't able to read every bit of the reports, but referenced a George Mason study? Can somebody else work with that? Do we need a broader perspective using the one Fairfax Equity Resolution that we, that talked about equity and social equity, and look at it from that perspective? I do understand the passion and the pain that both sides feel. And while it's easy to say, and it is our job in the end, it is our job, but is now really the time? I'm not a rip-your-band-aid kind of person, and I'm sure that doesn't sit well with some colleagues, but I am more deliberate, I am more thoughtful, I want, I want us to come to... My desire last year, when I put the compromise out on the table to say, let's have a larger community dialogue, was never to want to prolong this in a painful way for the community. And unfortunately, we're here, and I want us to come to the best resolution possible. And I think, and it's very hard right now to listen to some of the things that are being said about the school in my community, which again, I have had many petitions about a year or so ago when this all came out, from students who said, we don't want the change to Lee High School. And hearing what we're hearing from some of the community members voicing their opinion to the principal and to the regional assistant superintendent, again, is different. So if we made a decision on Stewart, and then on June 20, on 22nd, and then on June 23rd, the same issue came before us with Lee High School, and we weren't at a point where we were a divided board that didn't feel like we used policy to make the best decision possible, that would be troubling to me. So those are my comments for the moment.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's very thoughtful comments. I guess I start from a place, and I think I spoke to folks who talked to me about changing the name, the day I was sworn in. When confronted with the question totally cold, my question back to them was, did the community name this school? They said yes through the school board. And I said, well, then I guess communities can change the name of schools if they can name schools. And so I start off from that perspective, that names on buildings are picked at a certain period of time and then renamed. We know that happens ourselves, that it's just a process of the life of a building. It can be named and renamed and renamed again. The question I think that the board has today is, the decision to rename this school will establish the process going forward. And I mentioned in my question to our speakers that there are 32 buildings within FCPS that have connections to slaveholding plantations, violent slaveholders, Confederate officers for the South, and on. And we need to have a, I don't think we can say we are ready to vote unless we've started at least to think about, well, what are we going to do for the future? And so I think that my starting place is, I don't think we're ready to make that decision until we have those mechanisms in place. And I'm not suggesting that that's a process, that coming up with those metrics is a process that takes years or anything like that. I think that this has bubbled up to the school board, and, you know, for me, this exercise, and I wasn't a history major, but I've always loved American history, and particularly the Civil War. My father was in the Army, and I, you know, was reminded that virtually every place I ever lived was named after a Confederate general. And because a lot of the military bases throughout the South are named after famous Confederate soldiers. And so this has given me an opportunity to re-watch Ken Burns' Civil War documentary, which I highly recommend to everyone. It's very, very well-prepared, and I think has stood the test of times in terms of production. One of the comments that is made by a soldier in the South that Shelby Foote mentions when the question was, well, what were the Southern soldiers fighting for? And the soldier said, because they're here, right? That soldier had no concept of why he was fighting, except that it was in his home state, and there were folks shooting at him. And so it's a very complicated discussion when you get into the America's family fight. And I come from a large family. I've had a large family fight that happened 15 years ago, and we haven't gotten over it. Takes a long, long time. And this family fight killed an incredible number of people. To me, you can't watch Ken Burns's documentary and finish an episode with not wanting to cry. They literally are talking about stacking bodies up so they can get through, coming back to battle sites, and the skulls of dead soldiers are there in the exact same places where they had died the year before, and now they're going to refight another battle. And so the wounds of this, it's not, it shouldn't be a shock that we are still working through it as a country, and the unfortunate story of Jim Crow in our country did not help that. That exacerbated a wound, infected a wound that wasn't addressed fully at the end of the Civil War. And I would encourage everyone, if you haven't watched the movie Hidden Figures, watch that movie. A delightful story that, you know, we need to be reminded about, that it wasn't too long ago when Black Americans couldn't use the same bathroom as white Americans. And so we are in a position today, and I agree with Mr. Longmire, that we are in a position where we can decide to lead. And maybe it's hubris of what I think this board can accomplish, but the rest of the country's watching. People are paying attention to us. We may want to find out what other places have done, but they're also watching us. And I think it's incumbent on us to reach a conclusion as a board in a reasonable period of time, but also to think about, what do we think about this county of ours, which is soaked in the blood of Northerners and Southerners who fought very bloody battles here? And I think that's an important thing. And so I have a couple of ideas, and I'm not suggesting that this is a complete framework. But I think we do need, because I think our current policy says something like, we can rename schools if there's a compelling interest. And I think that while that's a, certainly, I think would be a requirement to rename schools, because we wouldn't want to rename schools without having some sort of compelling reason to do so, because it's, there's an expenditure of funds, and it affects that school community dramatically, because there's a history associated with that school, and graduates, and current students. We need to have some threshold, and I tried to get at this question in my questions for our speakers. There needs to be some method of determining whether or not there is an adequate level of interest and support in changing the name of the school. I don't know that I would say that it's a vote, but certainly something, a petition, something to indicate a level of interest in the community, because it needs to come from the community before it gets to our board. I think that there should be some discussion about whether the county, the taxpaying citizens of the county should pay for name changes, where the school has a name, and the board, presumably at the time, made the decision to name this school, tried to make a reasonable decision. So if the South County folks have a school that's named, and they think that's a boring name for their school, that they ought to pick somebody more dramatic? I like Clara Barton, but, you know, that's just my own personal opinion. But the folks, there should be enough enthusiasm in the community that they have at least the capacity to begin that effort by showing some financial capacity to defray those costs. Now, whether it's 100%, I don't know, but the numbers that we've seen, if they're accurate, it's a pretty significant dollar figure associated with Jeb Stuart. And I think that if there's a decision that's put forward to the board to take away the name of the school to a person, my own feeling is, people are flawed. And Ms. Schultz brought up Rachel Carson. I don't know a whole lot about Rachel Carson, but my understanding is that she opposed the use of a pesticide that could have been used to control mosquito-borne illnesses. And she was such a strong champion of it that she succeeded in stopping its use, and the consequence was, in Third World countries, lots of people lost their lives because they weren't using this very available anti-mosquito spray. I don't know the details of it, but my point is only to say that, you know, different people will take a, as his time goes on and we learn more about people, we learn that we all have some skeletons in our closets, some things we're not too proud of. So if a name comes, if a name change proposal comes forward, I would suggest to the board that the new name needs to be preferably a location that is non-controversial. And so I know that names can also be controversial. We have a number of schools named after plantations where slaves were used as a means of economic success. So names can also be, but I think people are inherently perhaps more problematic, because we even know that our founding fathers, when put under the scrutiny of history and the examination of all of the subsequent generations of people that studied them, we discover that the microscope reveals a few warts. So those are just some ideas. I think we should, as a board, we can come together and come up with the framework, because right now, we have a framework for naming schools. We talk about renaming schools, it just says a compelling interest, but I think that can be fleshed out a little bit more, so that when we inevitably face with a future challenge to a name, we can say that here's how we proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I think I'll take a couple of moments now. I'm probably the only board member around this table who is the graduate of a school that no longer exists. The building exists, the students go to the same building, they go to the same classes, they realize the same visions and excitement. I was thrilled last night to see Wes Potomac at the Caffees just knock it out of the ballpark, because that is what the woman who envisioned Wes Potomac as Groveton, as a center for the performing arts and the humanities envisioned for that building, was to have a standalone building named Springbank after one of the portions of the old Mount Vernon estate, and one which was then carved off and given to the families that were freed as a result of George Washington's will. And so as a child growing up in this community, where I went to Quander Road Elementary School, which was the very first elementary school built as a desegregated school in Fairfax County, and Quander Road was built and named because of the Quander family. And so we were taught from a very early age about the challenges and the horrors of slavery, but also about the optimism post-slavery, when you see families that are still resident in the Mount Vernon region. And they actually, my kids go to school with kids that I went to school with at Quander Road of all races. Lot of biracial marriages as a result of the wonderful experience that we had growing up together. So this renaming of Jeb Stuart has been a bit of a quackmire for me. I've tried to look at it in discernment because, or with discernment, because you can't look at this school and the renaming of it based on a compelling reason. And if the compelling reason, and I'm going to read from the report, is, "It is antithetical to Fairfax County's policy and position on diversity and inclusion to continue to have a school named after a man who took up arms in defense of enslavement of 4 million people and their descendants." We cannot look at that as being the compelling reason and say that this is a singleton decision. This is something that, as a county, we need to address as to how we are going to name buildings, whether or not it is appropriate to have buildings, roads, and schools named after Confederates. And so, and this is not the first place that this has been determined. Interesting, everybody talks about what's going on in New Orleans and the remarkable remarks of the mayor. But what New Orleans does with their schools is they have a policy that has the community decide the name of a school every 20 years. I am not recommending that here. But, you know, when Mrs. McLaughlin asked what other places do, California has looked at this. California determined that they would remove the name of Confederate generals from any building that did not also have an alignment with a area, a magisterial area or a county. And so that's another approach that has been taken. There have been approaches where, in Hampton Roads, Virginia, Hampton, Virginia, is in the process. They've held two public hearings in the past month at the request of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference to determine the names of their schools. Newport News is also considering this. So this is not something that we're doing in isolation, and I do believe that we are all coming to it with a passion for having good, sound policy and decision-making. So what I would suggest is that we follow... How's the game going? I would suggest that we follow the approach that has already been taken by Princeton, by Yale, by Harvard, by other policymakers across the country, which is that define what our metrics are. Define as a county, because this has to be a county and school board decision, because we are dependent on the county for our funding. And if we look at this as we can go ahead and do Stewart today, or Stewart on the 22nd, and have a moratorium, that is not actually something we can get away with doing, because we will have already set the precedent. I believe that as a county, we need to address these very difficult... I believe that as a county, we need to address these very difficult issues as to what is the environment, what is the, how do we ensure that we learn from the mistakes of the past, but also create a culture and a environment for our students as they come into a building that they cherish the experience and they're proud of what they have. And I would leave with you that we also have to address the funding piece. And the reason I say this is that it took until the 30th anniversary of Wes Potomac High School before Wes Potomac High School had a front entrance way that was on par with the other high schools in this county. And the reason was that the county made a decision to close to close one school and to expand boundaries, rename a school, but they did not give the funding to the boosters or the PTA. And it took 30 years for the community to be able to raise the funds because as they started raising funds, then something came up like you had to replace band uniforms. Oh, we had to replace the, we had to go for a turf field, we had to everything, there's always a press funds. And so if we are, as a people, committed to changing these names, then we as a people have to be committed to funding them. And then there the question is, what do we take off the table? But I believe strongly that this community, the school board and the board of supervisors will meet in July at a retreat and this should be the focus to continue the discussion we started last July on a one Fairfax. Ms. Evans, and then I would suggest that we poll where we're at.
So well.
Did you have a note, go back? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay, well then let Megan go first if she was, no, that's, no, that's okay because I just raised my hand, so go go ahead if you had a go back.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, so I'm going to repeat that whatever we do, we have to give Stewart an answer soon. It really cannot go into another school year, it's unfair to this community. So I hear what people are saying about wanting to take, have a broader context, I think that's valuable. I hear what people are saying about having metrics going forward, looking at the policy. But if we were going to do that, we should have been thinking about this for the last year. We should have been thinking about this in the last year and we should have been going down either asking the ad hoc committee to look at that and say, give us, give us metrics. We didn't ask them to give us metrics, but that would have been one way of dealing with it. If we wanted to have an overarching policy, we could have been discussing this the entire year. So I, I can't support going another, you know, six months or a year to be doing this work that we could have been doing in the last two years. So I kind of like Ms. Hines' idea that we we give Stewart a yes or a no and then have a moratorium until we have looked at these broader questions. I understand the reason why some, some people might think that's not a great idea, it may not be perfect, but at the same time, there's no school that we have been discussing for two years. As far as the precedent goes, I agree with Mr. Longmire about that. You know, this is, it's a, it's a case by case situation and you know, each community is going to be a little different, each school is going to be a little different. While I would value a larger conversation with the county, I don't think that the larger conversation with the county has to stop us because we, we could go on and on and on for a decade. We really could if we were going to broaden it and broaden it and broaden it and say, you know, we, we've got more that we've got to do, we've got to look at what every other jurisdiction is doing or most other jurisdictions. We know Houston renamed aid schools, we know there have been schools in Virginia that have been renamed, there have been schools in Florida, you know, I can certainly give board members, you know, to the extent that I've collected this over the last two years, I can certainly send them that. I don't think we need to base our decision on what's going on in other parts of the country. Some places have renamed them, others haven't, you know, that's, that's the bottom line. Some have, some haven't. We're not going to get that the whole rest of the country has renamed all of its, its schools. We're also not going to get that the rest of the country hasn't. So at the end of the day, we have to decide, you know, for today's schools, for ourselves today. And I just feel very strongly that, that we, we have to make a decision, it's been two years, we owe it to that school.
Ms. McLaughlin.
So the reason I wanted to go back is because I heard a lot about the moral imperative piece and when and what makes for the threshold or the compelling reason for changing Jeb Stewart. And then as Mr. Wilson brought up, if we've got 32 other schools that have connections to slavery and or plantations, then what are we doing with those schools too? And so on the one hand, I can wrap my brain around what Ms. Evans said and Mr. Longmire where, you know, you've got to take these each on a case by case basis. But at minimum, what I've heard, one of the most compelling reasons for Jeb Stewart is that he was Confederate officer and the principles of the Confederacy are controversial and can be offensive to members of our community. And if that's the case, then Ms. Evans, my concern is, I don't know how this board speaks to that moral imperative and then says, but Robert E. Lee High School is in a different context. I don't know how that gets done. So to Mr. Wilson's point of 32 schools that have, you know, either slaveholders or slave plantations, I, that starts to get broader away. But I, I do worry that the very communities that we're trying to show sensitivity towards and talk about the moral imperative of is it appropriate in 2017 to have a school named after a Confederate general, that I don't know how we can say, oh, but we don't know too about Lee or Lee will be on its own case. I mean, the bottom line is Jeb Stewart and Robert E. Lee, and then maybe one can argue Mosby Woods, for John Mosby, that those three kind of, they're, they're all three the same. And so one of the rationales for why I said, I, I don't want to vote in two weeks, is I don't think it takes another year, I don't even know that it takes four to six months. But if this board thinks that we can make a position and vote to say a moral imperative and those two other schools, we don't have a prepared response on how we're going to address that, I think we look somewhat hypocritical. Because it's either the right thing to do or it's not. And if it is, then let's do it. But out of fairness to Ms. Darnett Kofax's community, and I believe it's Providence that has Mosby Woods, those communities will want to say, well, I'm glad Jeb Stewart got to debate it for two years, but we didn't get to be part of the dialogue. So when we talked about some of the other Virginia communities, I think it was Hampton Roads that got cited, I mean, they had a public hearing, we haven't even done that at least. So to my colleagues, I shared with Ms. Evans yesterday, ideally, could we try and make a decision by the August 1 recess? That would be optimal. And can we then make some very quick work here on making sure that our policies are very clear on what we mean by compelling reason? Absolutely. If people read the, the media coverage, and Texas is a perfect example, this board cannot afford to waste taxpayer dollars on lawsuits. And one of the things that happened in, in, I believe it was Houston, is they were sued because they said their process was flawed. So even if we feel like we're doing the right thing, but we have a misstep in our process, then we have actually harmed the community in a different way as well. So I hear a lot about appreciation and that there's been all this dialogue between the board and we should be ready. And as I shared with Ms. Evans as well yesterday, there has not been board dialogue on this at all. This, this basically came to the board a year ago because it was a Mason District issue and we were sympathetic to Ms. Evans that this is very complicated, so complicated that the Mason District Supervisor Penny Gross has not come forward on a public position on this. So, you know, in terms of where's the courageous leadership, where's the moral imperative, where are all of our supervisors on this one as well? Cost is going to involve them because they're our funding authority, but I don't want anyone in this room to hear that we're looking at a long protracted effort here, but we do need to do it right. We cannot afford a lawsuit and we cannot afford to look like hypocrites. So I, I don't, I am worried that that has been not made clear yet and I, I do want to just clarify that I respectfully disagree with Ms. Evans. This board has not had substantive dialogue with each other, not with our communities, and it hasn't been two years. And I do agree with you, Ms. Evans, that there should have been better direction to the committee on some of the things maybe we want them to look at, but in all fairness, beyond the motion that Ms. Darnett Kofax had, our superintendent, former superintendent Karen Garza, to my knowledge, never came back to this board and said, here's my framework, here's my recommendation, here's what, this is what the committee is going to be doing. So we haven't had a voice as a board to say, can we make sure they look at this, this and this? It was sort of like the motion handed over to superintendent and the board's been waiting for a year. So I do hope at minimum today's conversation, this board, to Ms. Evans' concerns, I hope we have clarity today, are we voting in two weeks or not? My statement is, before the August 1 recess, I'm pragmatic in seeing how we can get there, but not in two weeks. I don't see that we're prepared as a board to do that and ensure that we do this in a way that the community doesn't end up with a greater backlash and being torn apart even worse.
Ms. McLaughlin, just to clarify, since you referenced the number of facilities, my understanding is that, that John Singleton Mosby is the person that Mosby Woods was named after, that's an elementary school. Shreve Wood Elementary School is named after William Henley, Henry Shreve, also fought on the, for the Confederacy. Lanier Middle School is named after Sidney Lanier, also fought for the Confederacy and then there's, there is Lee High School and Stewart High School.
Thank you. Just to note that Lanier, Lanier Middle School though is city of Fairfax.
Okay.
So we will be responsible for that one, but thank you for getting more names.
Mr. McAlveen wanted me to point out, point out that Lanier was also the poet laureate for the Confederates.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for clarifying that. I see that we have Elizabeth Schultz and then Ms. Hines.
Ms. McLaughlin, you brought up August, the August recess, which I'll get to in a moment. You know, and we go back to, you know, is this a historical imperative in terms of understanding history and context? And do we make a better, do we make a better judgment if we understand history, history and context and have it synthesized maybe by not the two sets of voices that began this, potentially? And, and I, I'm, I'm growing in my advocacy for a referral to sort of an independent body of work, coming from not the two sides, not staff, because staff really wasn't charged with doing this, you were just charged with monitoring it, sort of like the, the commercial with, I'm not a security guard, I'm a security monitor, yeah. So you were, you were a committee monitor in that regard. And so I'm, I'm growing in my advocacy, I was sort of neither here nor there about it, but I'm starting to think it's a really good idea because we have two firmly opposed, ironically, since we're talking about the Civil War, two firmly opposed sides and I think that Mr. Moon and Mr. Wilson tried really hard to solicit and Mr. McAlveen, I think you did too, whether there was any potential for compromise and none really sort of arose. The SOQs were not being followed for I don't even know how many years when I started digging into full day Mondays, the second I, actually before I joined the board, but the second I joined the board. And it took two and a half years to bring the issue of full day Mondays and whether there was equity in the amount of time that children in elementary school were learning from building to building, whether we were complying with the state standards of quality, whether they were getting equal recess time, whether they were getting equal lunchtime. And it was extraordinary effort to address maybe what's a moral imperative of, you know, a 43 year full day Monday, not, you know, in Fairfax County, when the rest of the country was having elementary children go to school a full day each calendar day between Monday, Monday to Friday. That was a lot of effort and I, I thought that was a moral imperative that our children from one building to the next had the same amount of academic time, had the same amount of recess time, that we even had the same length of school day. We literally had children not going to school the same amount of time in a year from building to building. And we didn't solve that, you know, in a month because we decided it was a moral imperative. We took the time to unbundle what it would take, what the resources were, how we would address the fact that we weren't meeting the state standards of quality. Sleep, Ms. Evans, I, I think you would agree that you thought it was a moral imperative that children get and be served by school division, school hours that allowed them to sleep, to come to school, you know, in a frame of reference that was, you know, mentally and physically prepared to learn. Is it a moral imperative that we have four year olds who are much in need of preschool because they're at risk and they have one year to get on the list and we haven't provided the facility space because we haven't figured out how to do it with the resource that we have? And once you miss that one year for them, it's gone. I mean, this school has been named this name for 59 years. It wasn't a, a moral imperative 15 years ago, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, five years ago, three years ago, but it's a moral imperative to make the decision in the next, you know, 10 days or so? I, I, I think, I think we have some moving goalposts on that. For, for me is, you know, un, unringing a bell from 59 years ago because we must do it and we must do it in the month of June, I, I don't know, I think I'm deferring to kind of where Ms. Darnett Kofax is, is that, you know, if you're going to do something, you are going to start a series of successive decisions or, or non decisions that are inextricably related, that you're going to have to be very well schooled on what happens next. And you cannot, I think, on one hand, argue that this is a compelling need and in the very next sentence say, but we can moratorium everything else after that. Those are diametrically opposed arguments. If it's a compelling need, it's compelling and you have to do it. And, and you can't isolate one building in one area of the county and proclaim that's a compelling need if it's not a compelling need every place else.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
So, so, so I'm just saying that we have a history as a board of taking our time, sometimes too long, but doing something quickly can cause more damage or doing something without a plan. Um, or doing something without a plan of what happens next can do more damage than taking longer to get it right. Measure twice, cut once.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Um, we have two people, uh, one for a first-go-around and then a go-back. Uh, what I'm gonna suggest is we take those two comments and then, uh, we close out this session with a recommendation of where to go next. But, um, I'm cognizant that it is on the, it's twenty minutes to three and we have quite a bit more on our agenda and we do not wanna be keeping staff here all night. So, if I can suggest that, uh, Mr. McElveen go first and then Ms. Hines and then we'll do a round about where we go next.
Um, so I just have a, a piece that we, I don't think we have considered yet. Um, and if the motion, whenever it comes forward, is to vote in favor of renaming the school, we will need to set some sort of parameters for that renaming. Um, because I would assume that as soon as the board made a change, if it were to do so, um, we would then launch into our process, which is outlined in our policy and regs about school renaming, correct? Um, and if the board wanted to, um, for example, uh, ensure, for example, that something like Stewart was included in the new name, were we to change the name in order to mitigate the costs, would we specify that when we make the change, when we vote for a change, correct? So, we need to consider that. Um, and I would just pos- posit that although the committee failed to come to some sort of compromise, it does not preclude the board from thinking creatively to come up with some sort of compromise to bring the community together. Um, so I hope we continue to think along those lines and I hope that as we craft a motion or amendments or follow-on motions that we don't leave staff and the community high and dry when it comes to next steps.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen, and I love your spirit of consensus-building. Uh, Ms. Hines.
Well, and I think that starts to get us toward what we're trying to do, which was come up with some, you know, basic motions and maybe follow-ons, you know? How do we kind of figure this out? Um, I think, a couple of things. We serve children, so everything we do is grounded in a moral imperative, right? And we often take a long time to make decisions because we're a big board and we're a serious board. And I, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. I think Ms. McLaughlin's right that we have not, as a board, had very many conversations about this at all. In fact, I don't think we have had any as a board in almost a year. So, but, on the other hand, it has been two or two and a half years from the perspective of the community. And we have to think about that because this has been difficult for the community and, and that, to me, is the reason to try to get to a conclusion, you know, before the new school year begins. I think if, if there are board members who would feel much more comfortable making a decision in July than June, I think that is a, a time change that I'm willing to live with. I, I would not wanna go past that. Um, I, I, you know, I think it's fair to say that however we vote on this, other groups will be coming to us. This won't end the conversation in the community. Um, I think however we vote on Jeb Stewart, there will continue to be, um, some angst and unpleasant, uncomfortable conversations in that community as well, you know? These are hard. And, um, but this is our decision to make. There will always be at least two sides. And, um, you know, there, I, I think actually that the, the community groups did a good job of, of, you know, hammering all that out and now I think we should try to use their work. Um, I think the idea that deciding now would be somehow checking a box or ripping off a Band-Aid, I, I, I think for our sake, because we haven't had a lot of conversation about it, that might feel that way. But from the community's perspective, I don't think it feels that way. I think this has been difficult for them. I don't, this, I'm sure, does not feel like ripping off a Band-Aid to them or checking a box because that makes it sound like it's been too simple and too quick and too easy and it has not been any of those things for the community. So, I would just push back a little bit on that. Um, I also, finally, I would say, uh, you know, compelling need. Ms. Corbett Sanders, you read the, um, a quote from the Pro Group's report about what they consider the compelling need and I think, uh, we should be informed by that. But ultimately, and this may get to what Mr. McElveen was saying, we decide what the compelling need is. And I, I agree with you. I don't think the compelling need that they describe is all that there is. I think we need to add to it because if it's just, uh, did the person, you know, turn against the country and fight for the Confederacy, then that, that, that gathers a lot of names in Fairfax County and particularly Lee, you know? And I, I, my, personally, I can see a difference between Stewart and Lee. I think it's different and I think there are significant differences. And I think that's why, uh, as we make this decision about Stewart, I would like to see us describe why, what the compelling need we believe is for this change. And that, you know, that way, we can distinguish it from, uh, other decisions that come later and we can, you know, fit it into, um, a, a, a list of criteria or a process or a decision-making metric, you know, that we would come up with, um, for, for future decisions. Um, so I, uh, I, I really would like to see us try to get to yes for the Stewart community and do it in a way that leaves us in good shape for future decisions that we have to make. And, um, that, I think, means, uh, an up or down vote on Stewart and some follow-on motions that commit us to do other work. Um, so that's what I'd like to see us talk about now.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I think that frames the remainder of the conversation. I would hope that we would just spend a short time now and then, um, reconvene at a different point on this conversation as far as, uh, any sort of motions or follow-on motions. My advocacy would be that we actually convene a joint meeting between the school board and the Board of Supervisors, use the opportunity of our already-scheduled, um, conversation between the two boards in July to have this conversation because this conversation does impact our, um, funding. And so, we need to talk about how, what a, come to consensus on the compelling need and then, uh, come to a consensus on how we fund any sort of compelling need.
If I could just respond to that, um, I, I, I think that's fine. What I would not like, what I would not like to have happen is for that conversation with the Board of Supervisors to slow down our decision on Stewart because, as we know from experience, conversations with the Board of Supervisors rarely produce any kind of product on the day, right? It will take a long time. And if we're really talking about an amount of money that is well below a half a million dollars, which I think is what we're looking at here, uh, the Board of Supervisors does not decide with that detail how we spend our money. So, you know, I, I think the county board may have their own conversation that they wanna have about, you know, Jefferson Davis Highway or whatever other naming they have to think about. But I think we can keep it, I'm not saying it's, it's not a useful conversation, it would be, but I think, to me, it has to happen separately from the Jeb Stewart decision.
Ms. Schultz, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Strauss.
Okay, um, I'm not real eager to look to the Board of Supervisors to help us with this decision. Um, I think they're kind of watching and sort of hoping, glad that they're not in this vote with us. Um, uh, my sense is if, if board members are not ready to change the name of a school, then, then they vote no. Um, we, we just need to solve this one. If people want to go ahead and to follow on motions to, you know, put more, um, policy parameters on this, this, this may be a good thing because there's a lot, there's a lot of this discussion going on. Um, the, um, but I, the Board of Supervisors, we did one Fairfax, everybody believes in that. That resolution, however, um, may or may not have any bearing on this. I, I rather think this is our decision, one way or another, than however we're gonna do it. And again, since I opened with the discussion, I'll, again, rephrase my thinking. I would be happy to just go with Stewart and take the Jeb off. There may be nobody wants to do that. If the board wants to do a more, uh, a more extreme naming, I'm willing to listen to that as well. But that's the extent where I am. But I do believe, in fairness to the school and the people who have worked so hard on this, on both sides, we need to make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
I think we owe the community an answer from, uh, from this board. Uh, it is way too late for us to invoke Board of Supervisors in this discussion. I think our board needs to make a decision. And if the, if the decision is to change the name of the Stewart to something else, if that's, if, if, if that gets the majority vote, uh, my advocacy for funding will be by this board. There has to be a compelling need to change the name. If there's a compelling, compelling need is found by this board, it's compelling enough for us to fund, for the name change. So, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna rely upon the community or, I mean, if there are, you know, willing, willing donors out there just waiting for us, you know, make a name change and willing to donate, that's fine. I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna refuse any money from any, you know, any source. But be there as it may, I think, if there's a compelling need found by this board, compelling enough to change the name, I think it should be compelling enough for us to fund. So, he, having said that, uh, you know, I don't wanna go beyond, I don't wanna go beyond July in making a decision, uh, that I think, you know, we should come up with whatever the motion, you know, e- the, that, uh, straw motion we can come up with. That doesn't mean you are bound to support that, whatever that comes out of this. I'm hoping that we can come some, we can have something out of this work session as a straw motion to put forth and then we can debate that at the, at, at the board meeting and then, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to support that if you don't want it. But we, I would like to have something put forth as a new business. And then, you know, we don't have to, i- i- it doesn't have to be June twenty-second, uh, you know, board meeting to make a final decision. But I don't wanna go beyond, much beyond, beyond that. So, uh, you know, if we can make a decision before the, before the August recess, if not early or done, you know, if not at the first meeting in July, you know, I can live with that. But I think, I, I think we owe it to the community and ourselves to make a decision and move on.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. Wilson, followed by Ms. Schultz and then I think we, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, Ms. McLaughlin, thanks.
Well, because, no, i- it's actually because you've had your go-back, Mr. Wilson hasn't had a go-back yet. Okay. Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I, I, I thought we'd moved into a new section and we were done with go-bangs on the merits and now it's just, what do we wanna do here? So, so anyway, um, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't wearing the invisible shield. So, thank you. Um, so I appreciate what Ms. Hines said and I'm gonna really, really implore our board on this one and, and maybe picks up a little bit on Mr. Moon as well. This is a, been a very difficult issue. And if we want to come out with strong leadership on it, then we need to bring as many of the board members along with the confidence of the decision we're going to make. And that is not in two weeks. Uh, I, I do reinforce what I offered up earlier as an option. I think that we should look at doing this before the August recess. Um, Mr. Moon's proposal's a little too ambitious for me, whether we vote June twenty-second or then July first. I don't think that's, that's allowing us to be able to answer some key pieces to what this vote will be. But I did notice that, uh, we have a work session on July seventeenth. I don't think it would require three hours of more deliberation, but I do think that that would enable us to touch base as a board together. That gives us enough time to go back into our own districts where we've not have this dialogue. We were elected to represent our districts and I think it's important that those of us especially who are magisterial district representatives have that opportunity to dialogue with our communities and, quite frankly, just to talk to other key stakeholders. Uh, so if we were then to schedule the vote, you know, no later than, um, the July twenty-seventh meeting, then that, to me, en- enables us to do better work. Um, I don't think we have to iron out every single detail on this one, but look at what this has done to the community when we had a great, well-intended motion by Ms. Kofax, but it came up last minute as we were wrestling with this. It wasn't fleshed out and we got caught a little flat-footed. I don't wanna get ca- caught flat-footed on this one again. So, follow-on motions are good and I'm agreeing with Ms. Hines that we don't have to have it all worked out when we make the decision, is, is it time to change this name or not? But if we don't at least, among ourselves, have some clarity on what the next steps will look like, we will not be respected in the decision we make. So, that's, again, my advocacy to my colleagues, I think, you know, setting it by the end of July.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Wilson?
Uh, thank you. Um, so I wanna, I wanna get in, talk a little bit. I guess we've, we've brought it up now several times, the notion of the compelling need. Uh, because I actually, um, uh, I think that, um, my colleagues would all agree that something that Mr. Longmire stated really raises, rises to the level of a compelling. He, he likened the, the icon of Jeb Stewart and the mascot and the history of the rebel flag being at the school to nooses being hung. I mean, and, and so I think that, that the experience of our students, having that experience of sort of overt feelings of racism being projected on them, I think that fits into the category of what we would say is a compelling need. Now, our policy says the school board may also consider a change in the name of the school where some other compelling need exists. So, for example, and I tried to dr- drill down on this a little bit in my questions. If there's one student who is offended and feels that the, the image is offensive to him, you get to the point where as a school board, we're gonna affect sixty years of history and twenty-five hundred students at the school, there is a, there's a question there because there is a history associated with Jeb Stewart that day, that student may say, may only see the image, may only hear, kind of know the glib references to Jeb Stewart as a Confederate. Perhaps there were more knowledge, that student might reach a different conclusion, good conclusion. But I think that I've sort of am at the place where compelling need is based upon, is what drives the community to raise it up to the board, drives the initial, you know, discussion. And so, you know, I mean, and it's up to us to evaluate whether what's been presented rises to the level of, is this worth upending the history of a school and the students who are there? And doing it, in, in my view, without thinking about, if, if we're gonna make the choice to change the name, without thinking about, well, what are the ramifications for, for future schools? What are the, what's the process for future schools? And I think we have to be mindful that while we may agree that the symbolism associated with Jeb Stewart is offensive and is seriously offensive to enough students of Jeb Stewart to validate renaming, we still have to think about, well, how are we gonna move forward? What would be the subsequent decisions? And, and so I guess for that reason, um, you know, I think that, you know, sort of trying to make the decision on how we reach the conclusion of a vote is premature. If we haven't sort of discussed, while there is this presented compelling need, what is our, what is our, what, how are we making the decision about the decision to spend money, upend that history, to change the, the whole community's point of reference for their high school? And, and I guess, for that reason, I guess I would agree with my colleagues who have suggested that we take a little more time to be a little more, um, uh, deliberative in, in, in how we implement a policy that allows for change, changing the high school name.
Ms. Darinette Kofax.
I think Mr. Wilson just articulated the thing that I most closely am aligning with. Um, a- as I said, um, my original intent was to get a compromise, to move forward. We are where we are today, but we cannot decide on one school without making the deliberate decision on where we're gonna move forward for this policy, for at least those three other schools that you mentioned and potentially others, for, for other schools that you mentioned and potentially others. Um, I am hesitant to put any kind of time, July twenty-second, whatever, whatever. I'm, I'm hesitant to do that. And I'm also interested and I would like to, um, have Ms. Corbett Sanders talk, um, to me a little bit about her idea, um, well, and, and I mentioned it as well, using the Fair Fat One Equity. using the Fairfax One Equity, Fairfax Resolution, to, to, to deal with this. I don't think, um, when the Board of Supervisors, so, let's just play this out. So, let's just say we, we move forward, um, with some of these changes outlined, then, you know, you've, you've got, if you change one thing, a, a, a school that's named one thing, do you change a district that's named the same thing, a magisterial di- district? Um, uh, places within the magisterial district that are also named the same? So I think for us as a board to, to talk about this without talking to our funding bodies, without bringing that forward as, where do we as a community wanna go? Particularly since we both adopted this One Fairfax Resolution, and it took some time to get that resolution adopted county-wise via the skip committee, via, it, a, a lot of different places. And so when you, when you look at this, I, I, I think, I, I'm hearing the majority of my colleagues, I, I think we've moved away from, or the majority do not support, you know, moving forward on one agenda and then putting a moratorium forward. I'm not certain how long this, this conversation or dialogue would take place. Um, I, I would like to have a conversation amongst our board, our board specifically, and then I do think it has to go to the larger community, um, when, when we talk about these things. Um, and, but I don't know if our board has the desire to do that at the July retreat, and that would be, have to be something Ms. Evans would have to talk to Chairman Bulaba about, because those are the two that kind of put together that, that retreat. And I know we're having a meeting this week on, you know, funding and the Joint Budget Committee, and we can perhaps bring that up as, as a preliminary conversation during that meeting, because, um, there will be funding ramifications for this, um, doesn't, you know, there, there's differences on what they are, you know, whatever the range is. But, um, perhaps we can broach that, um, during our conversations and, and say this, this is something that we might wanna talk about further as a countywide issue. Um, so Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'd just like you to weigh in, that, those are kind of my thoughts on it. What, what were your thoughts?
My thoughts are aligned with yours, which is that we have a One Fairfax, uh, agreement, and it's designed so that we bring tough issues that have funding implications and equity issues, or equity implications, and we decide to tackle them together. And this is one where, uh, I look at this as being a compelling reason, but if it's a compelling reason, then it's a compelling reason for multiple locations. And so therefore, there's more of, it's more expensive than the $23,000 to replace the, um, electronic board out front of a school. Um, it is, expense associated, you have to do a risk analysis, or, and I hate to use that term, because it's not a risk analysis, but a, a cost analysis that says, if we actually change the name of any school, then that has, if you use the compelling reason that someone fought in the Confederacy, that's the broadest definition, or that's a broad definition, then you're talking four or five schools. If you're talking about, um, any name associated with slavery, then you're talking more, more schools. And so we have to look at this, uh, go into it with our eyes wide open, and define what the compelling reason is. And if the compelling rea-, if we believe strongly that the compelling reason is because of some affiliation, then we also have to be willing to fund it, because I would not want to see other schools go through the challenges that, um, you know, my alumni organization went through. And that, that would be my advocacy, is that we decide as two boards working together. Now, I do have, um, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Hines, and then Ms. Evans, and if we could then kind of wrap this up, I-
I just wanna thank you for adding substance to my skeptical thoughts, I appreciate that.
Um, so, um, I'm gonna first respond to Mr. Moon's, um, if, if he's gonna vote for it, and if, if I got this wrong, Mr. Moon, um, please correct me, but you said if the bo- board decides to vote for it, we should just pay for it? Okay, so, that right there says to me, we're nowhere near close to making this decision, because that, we'll just pay for it, you know, a half a million, a million, s- s- 670,000, 750,000, whatever it is, just pay for it, just pay for it, how? You know, this is a board that just voted eight times against every opportunity I put on the table, from very small amounts of money to much larger amounts of money, to not increase class size. And every time it was because we don't know what it's gonna do, we don't know what it's gonna do. The answer was always, I don't know what that will mean for the school system, I don't have an explanation. Well, I don't know what a million dol- coming from where. So, I absolutely am not prepared to say, we should just write the check, because write the check means somebody else isn't getting the money, and we just passed a budget that increased class sizes, levied fees on families, and we didn't fix the substitute pay. So I, I'm completely not ready to do that. Um, number two is, I, um, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, I, I think you make a good point on the, the issue of the, the One Fairfax, I mean, we're getting ready, this is a bond year, you know, we're getting ready to bond money, and we're, we're kneecapped on the capital monies that we can bond because of what the Board of Supervisor says. So, this is, this is absolutely tied to budgetary constraints that are placed on us, because we don't decide how much money we get from the Board of Supervisors, they do. We don't decide how much capital bu- bonds, um, money we get, and, and what that percentage is, and what that does to the AAA bond, uh, rating, that's a conversation we have to have with the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Evans, you know, we're sitting here, and, you know, we're gonna have the Falls Church, uh, High School, you know, renovation discussion on, you know, are we gonna get money to renovate Falls Church? I, I hear, you know, bathroom issues at Stewart, you know, things that are imperative, you know, of physical structure stuff, and we're, we don't have the liberty to bond the amount of money that we need to handle the capital infrastructure needs that we are, that are already on the table. Um, we skipped our own retreat in February, we could've talked about it then, because we had other compelling needs on our, on our plate. Um, so we're overdue for a retreat ourselves, we could talk about this at the Board of Supervisors. This is really our first actually substantive work session discussion on this ever. This really is our, the first time we've actually talked about it, and that brings me to a point. Um, I don't know where Ms. Palchek is, I missed the, the note on that, but we're also down a member, and we're down a really significant member, which is one of the three at-large. And Tom Davis, the whole reason he moved this board originally from one at-large to three at-large, was to have more voices for the at-large community as opposed to the parochial interests. And so if we're gonna wait, you know, why not wait until the at-large community has another voice to represent it? We're getting, we're on the verge of, uh, a division leadership change within days, we're on the days countdown, you know, or month, to, to Dr. Braybrand. We're on the verge of a board leadership change, where we're gonna have a, a, a leadership, the annual leadership reorganization change on the board. And the, one of the, you know, three at-large voices, um, which is pretty significant, is, is missing. So, so, so hold on, so, the One Fairfax thing is, is, is an issue, Ms. Strauss, and there's, I, I, I found it funny that you made the point that the Board of Supervisors are glad they're not in our shoes. There's a reason you made that point, is they're not, they're not. But the question is, why not? If, if we're back to it's compelling need, then it's a compelling need for the 22 elected officials who are in charge of this county. We have far more infrastructure than the Board of Supervisors. We take more of the budget than the Board of Supervisors, but we're not in charge of any of the money that goes along to support it. You can't make this decision in a vacuum away from resources, you can't make this decision in a vacuum away from, um, historical reference, compelling need, feelings, and so you can't have only 12 of the, you know, 22 officials have this discussion. So, uh, not only do I think we need to have this discussion, um, you know, in a broad, in a broader context with them, um, I, I, I think if, if we're gonna wait, let's not set an arbitrary, you know, date on the calendar, let's, let's wait until we're at full strength and have a discussion with the 12 people who represent this county for the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. We have, uh, Ms. Hines, and then I'm gonna let Ms. Evans have the last word on this, and then we'll wrap it up.
Okay, so I'll be quick. Um, I, a couple things. I do like the idea of putting this on a work session for July 17th, um, and waiting until the end of July to vote, I think that will help, um, but I'm not willing to go any further than that, I think we need to up or down. Um, the idea of using One Fairfax, um, as part of this, I think, you know, I, I'm imagining a motion that's pretty detailed and robust, right? That says, here are the reasons why we're doing this. And I think we could put One Fairfax ideals in there, and I think we should. Um, but I do think, you know, schools are different from roads and town names and county names, it's different. I mean, we name schools for specific reasons, and they, there's a specific meaning, you know, because kids go in and out of them every day, they should uphold, uh, the, you know, that they're just, there are different rationale that goes into it. I also, you know, I'll say, from what I've seen, other school districts have made these decisions without pulling in so many issues and so many people and basically throwing, you know, the whole community at the problem, right? I, I think, I think we can do this. Um, so what I'm imagining is, um, a work session in July, uh, uh, maybe, we probably need more specific agenda item, uh, motions, but that we would on July 17th have a, a, a pretty detailed motion, and I'm willing to work on this with anybody who's interested, um, to change the name of Jeb Stewart up or down and explain why. Um, and I definitely think that, that, that we can craft it in a way that makes it specific to Jeb Stewart and allows us to move on, uh, with a policy going forward that will be consistent with what we do with Jeb Stewart, um, and, and not, you know, and not create this domino and, and, you know, feel like we're just putting out fires all the time. I, I see that concern. Um, and then follow-on motions, asking staff to present a calendar, if, if we vote yes to change the name of Jeb Stewart, have follow-on motions asking staff to present the calendar and the costs, you know, so that we know what that is, and then at some point the board has the conversation about how to pay the costs. You know, I hear Mr. Moon's advocacy, I, I, I think we should have that conversation, but I don't think we have to have it now. Um, and then also a follow-on motion, um, you know, directing staff about, to present us with a plan for choosing a new name. Um, and then I would like to see a follow-on motion that, you know, whatever our process would be, that we meet, and if it's working with George Mason, or if it's working with the county, or however we wanna do it, but to, um, to develop criteria to better describe what we mean by compelling need. And, um, if, if people feel uncomfortable with a moratorium, that's fine with me, but I, my thought would be that we don't move forward with any other name changes until we have done that work. So, that's my thoughts.
Ms. Evans.
So this is something of a repeat, and I, I know we're, we're kinda going round and round, but clearly some people wanna do it, uh, sooner, or some people wanna do it later, I think we just need to decide that, and, um, I, I, my preference would've been to do it sooner, but it sounds like more members of the board think that we need to have at least more conversations, so if it gives people, um, i- if people feel that we need to have another work session on this, then, uh, I was looking at the, uh, we do have a July 10th work session as well, so, uh, it's an evening work session, we could, um, put it on there and move something out of that, because I do think, you know, again, that this, this is pushing it, um, yet again. Um, and if the, you know, the community does need to have an opportunity, I was hoping we would come out of this meeting today with whatever our motion was gonna be. Um, because we, we need, we need to decide soon, you know, we need to, we need to make a decision. So, um, i- if it gives people more comfort to go into July, I, I don't have strong feelings about that, I do have strong feelings about going beyond July, because it's not fair to the school and the school community. But, um, I, we, we have to decide, so if we need to have, um, a work session on either July, well, it, it really should be July 10th, because the community, again, needs to have some time, if, if the vote is gonna be on July 27th, we have to give people some time to look at whatever the motion is going to be. So I think, clearly there's a division here, but we need to just raise our hands for if we want to, to make a decision of, get a motion and make a decision, let's say in July, if that gives people more comfort, or if we don't, and let's, let's decide.
So, Ms. Evans, um, I absolutely understand where you're coming from, and one of the things you, uh, following on from Ms. Hines is important, because Ms. Hines talked about doing a work session in July, and also talked about being very specific in a detailed motion specific to Jeb Stewart, which I would presume would actually define what the compelling reason is for renaming Jeb Stewart. So if that, so is it your understanding that you would actually come to a July 10th work session with a, with the definition of what the compelling reason is?
I, I'm looking, I am looking for guidance from the board. That is why we have this work session today, to get guidance on what the board wants to see. And so if that's what the board wants to see, that's what we'll bring the board.
So, if I can poll the board, is the board requesting that, um, we hold a July 10th work session, or a July 17th work session, one or the other, but, um, having a July work session, and prior to that work session, having a draft language of what the compelling reason is for the change of Jeb Stewart's name, so that that can be the focus of that work session, and it can create a tighter timeline? Because I am cognizant, I've never run a meeting this late, but I think it was important to have the dialogue around this table, but if we can focus on a definition of the compelling reason, then that would allow for a decision on language for an up or down vote.
So I, I, I think that's, you may have a few too many parts in there. Um, I, I would like to see us vote, first of all, on whether we are going to have a motion up or down on July 27th. Let's, let's start with that.
You have to fir-, I'm sorry, but, uh, just a point of clarification. In order to either have, in order to have a motion, first we have to vote on whether it's a compelling, I mean, our policy says if it's for a compelling reason, we, we first have to have the vote that it's a compelling reason, that it, that it meets a compelling reason.
But, but what I'm looking for is whether this board wants to have a vote, a definitive vote on Stewart on July 27th, yes or no? Do we or don't we?
Is that pending a, pending a compelling reason?
Well, if, if, well, if, if we, if we decide we're going to have a vote on, on July 27th, then we can look at, we can ask the board, what do you wanna see that day? What do you wanna see? What do you wanna see?
I think the idea is that we schedule a vote for July 27th, we have a work session on the 10th or the 17th, depending on what works, you know, we, we should poll 10th or 17th, I think. Um, but there may be reasons why the 10th doesn't work for people. Um, but, and then, you know, the, what we're asking for on the 27th is just, we're going to have a, a vote on this, and then between now and a work session in July, my plan is to work on a motion, or a set of motions of mine, and I'll float them to people, and you can, 'cause I think that's the work we have to do in the meantime, meet with our communities, meet with people on the task forces, and talk to each other about what we wanna see. That, those are the conversations we haven't had yet.
So could we have a vote on whether we wanna make a definitive decision for Stewart on July 27th?
Yes.
I mean, can we have a, can we have a show of hands of how many people wanna make a definitive decision for Stewart on July 27th?
Hold on a second. Um, Ms. McLaughlin had one comment on that, and then we can do a show of hands.
So I, I just have sort of a compromise. What we could vote on is, we have a tentative date of July 27th. We know that when we come into July 17th, where we discuss where we are with the work we've been doing on our own, leaving this meeting and going to the next work session is, people will know whether, yep, we're gonna still hold to our July 27th vote, or something could arise between now and the July 17th work session that we then have to talk to each other. But I think there's nothing wrong with today saying, you know, our best hope is for the July 27th vote, and then my process point I wanna share with everybody is, July 10th is probably not good, 'cause that is Scott Braybrand swearing in- because that is Scott Brabran swearing in on his first day working with us, and I don't want to put that on him, July 10th. Yeah, so I think that, quite honestly, the 17th gives us some better time. So, that's my proposal.
So, can I?
And if I could just say, I mean, really, we have a new business item already out there from last Thursday's meeting. We're just waiting for the action item, and any one of us can bring an action item. So, I don't know that we need to say we're all feel like right now we'll be ready to vote on the 27th. I think it's more asking, are people comfortable with going beyond the 22nd of June, but no farther than the 27th of July? Maybe, is what we're asking? I don't know.
So, I just would just say that, Ms. Hines, you offered, and I would offer up to help shore over some of the burden of trying to draft something that the board could maybe come to an agreement on.
So, we have two action items. One, if we can have a show of hands that there is a vote somewhere between the 22nd, we will postpone having a vote on the 22nd, but have a vote by the 27th of July. The second action item is that there will be a work session, and I tend to agree with Ms. McLaughlin that the 17th might be more preferential than on the 10th. And can someone please remind me of when the? Yes.
We have a shared services, but that is a shockful meeting that has, that we've got pensions on there. We've got a 45-page report on shared services. There's no way we're gonna add this to that agenda at this point. And that's coming up, oh, it's tomorrow. So, yeah, I don't think.
I could, I think the work with the Board of Supervisors is probably, the meaty part of it, the substantive productive part of it is not gonna happen before July 27th anyway, just realistically.
Ms. McLaughlin.
As governance chair, I just wanted to let you know that typically, we do a school board retreat in July. And certainly, if the board said they wanted to take some time on that conversation with Dr. Brabran, I'm not advising it. I'm just saying that is something we will be having in July.
Ms. Derenakova.
So, I guess my question is, then, there is no meeting scheduled in July with the Board of Supervisors. Is that correct? I thought that we were operating under that premise. So, correct, there is no meeting scheduled. Okay. So, well, that's a different, that's the joint budget meeting where we talk about.
But there is nothing that precludes us from asking for a joint meeting between the Board of Supervisors.
Correct, and that's what I said. I thought there was a date certain scheduled, and then I was gonna say, typically, the way that process would then work is Ms. Evans would approach Chairman Bolova, and they would work together to develop the agenda. But you're saying there's no date.
Well, I'm happy to ask for that. If the board wants, if this board wants us to request a conversation on this issue with the Board of Supervisors in July, I can certainly take that question to Sharon Bolova. But I guess that's a question for this board to find out if we want to have an invitation.
Exactly, so that would be a third thing.
So, that'd be number three, okay.
That's number three. And I would like to know whether this board would like to have a request made to the Board of Supervisors under the premise of the One Fairfax, that we have a discussion on the naming, a discussion on this topic with the Board of Supervisors during, prior to July 27th.
Well, if we could, we could ask for that, but I think we have to be realistic and say it may happen after that. And so, I can support it as long as we're okay with that date slipping some.
But it also needs to be dependent on the vote not waiting for that.
Well, we can, I think we have to have, we've already talked about the vote. Now, we've talked about the process between now and the vote and having a work session. And let's also talk about having a conversation with the Board of Supervisors.
Ms. Corbin Sanders, just for a point of clarification and a point of order. I understood that we were going to be meeting with the Board of Supervisors before this vote. And now, I'm hearing that we're not. And now, I'm hearing that we're talking about just requesting a meeting and that we would meet with them after we vote. You know, quite respectfully, this is the cart before the horse. This is exactly what I was talking about, is this is a linear process. And if we're not, if we're going to, if we think it's important to talk to the Board of Supervisors and have a One Fairfax discussion, then talking to them after we vote is somewhat moot. I mean, so, and then also, I would like to be considered a referral to George Mason whenever you get them. I don't know what, see, we don't have any next steps up here, so we're not talking about them in order. So, it's very difficult, frankly. I'm sorry. We're taking votes, and we're taking votes out of a context to their correlation. Isn't it important to take this vote in context to what else we're talking about?
No, I appreciate that clarification. Laughlin.
So, I had actually just gone to talk to Dr. Presidio about George Mason because, as Mr. Wilson made several of us aware, in addition to Jeb Stewart and Robert E. Lee High School, we have a couple of other schools named after Confederate officers. And so, I think before our July 17th work session, it'd be very helpful to the board, again, in terms of consistency and compelling reason, that we know, just a brief history about those Confederate-named schools within Fairfax County. Do those individuals have any history and connection to Fairfax County? Robert E. Lee, the family, has extensive ties to Fairfax County. From what I read on the Stewart family, I did not see Fairfax County ties. I don't know about these other Confederate officers. But if George Mason could at least give us the history on not just the two high schools, but anyone else that's got a Confederate name in our school system, I think that might be an option. It shouldn't be expensive, and it shouldn't be, it shouldn't take long at all, but a history professor with a background in Civil War might be able to get that for us.
I appreciate this.
Before the 17th. The second thing I want to make everyone aware is that we are tentatively scheduled to have our annual school board July retreat on Friday, July 21st, and Saturday, July 22nd. Again, it's not that we would need to have this discussion at it. And it's also not that we would, but if people really want to talk to the supervisors, we could say to them, hey, we're all gonna be together on Friday, the 21st, so. Or, I will also be needing to hear from board members and Chairman Evans if everybody decides that July is problematic in general to have our July retreat. But I know our new superintendent wants to have a retreat with us sooner rather than later.
I won't be there on that day, but that's okay. You don't need me.
But I have, prior to Ms. Hines, I have Ms. Strauss and then Ms. Hines.
I was gonna say, we need to bring this to a close. We have other stuff to do today. I'm looking at the next steps. I think we've already got an agreement that Ms. Hines, Mr. Wilson, are gonna work on some language that we will look at at the July 17th work session. We've heard a number of people, me included. We need to vote this July 27th. As I'm listening to everybody else, this is a very difficult decision. We can hear that. Some folks are not gonna be comfortable going forward. Some folks are. We don't know if it's gonna be up or down yet. There is, you know, we're just gonna have to wrestle with it. But I would encourage us to look at the next steps, figure this out, go forward, and we need to go on.
That, so if we can, what we do have left is a request for a joint session with, or a follow-up with the Board of Supervisors to see how we can meet and discuss this issue jointly.
I'm sorry, I was reading while you were talking.
Okay, convene a joint meeting between school board and Board of Supervisors in July to discuss renaming policy.
What's the end making plan?
Take off, make a plan, I think. Just focus with, have that discussion. Clarity, if you'd add my name to that.
Point session between the Board of Supervisors.
The fifth bullet.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's the majority. Okay. Give Stewart yes or no answer, and then institute a moratorium on name changes to school. Are we taking?
Moratorium wasn't it?
My top bullet, give Stewart, and then institute moratorium. Yeah, no, I think we have there that Mr. Wilson and I will work on language.
But I don't think we have support for.
The next step did not.
Yeah, I don't think we voted on a moratorium. I think instead, we agreed that, you know, I, and Tom and I, will come with language to the work session, hopefully get it out to people ahead of time. And if people have competing language, we will look at that, too.
Okay, so that's actually the compelling reason, define criteria, or is that separate?
Oh, golly. Yeah, get rid of the first one. Yeah, delete the whole bullet. Define criteria for naming? No. No, it's just, just draft, prepare draft motions.
Perfect.
For July work session. That's all we need to do. That other one, yeah, that's it. So, I would delete that. That's fine. But I would delete that other prepare, define, no. Get rid of that, yeah, thanks.
Topic should be focus of July retreat.
Since we've scheduled a work session.
Since we have a work session, I don't think we need it. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, you were talking about getting GMU to give a read on the names, but that's not that. So, we've agreed to the top one.
This, it needs to say something about invite, you know? Or, how about suggest joint meeting? How about just? And I will take care of that with Chairman Bolova.
For the, I would just put, you know, suggest joint meetings in July to discuss renaming using One Fairfax as a model, and then take out the third one.
That's up to, okay. Yeah, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, so, Ms. Corbin Sanders, did we take a vote on whether people preferred July 10th or July 17th? So, people do, we have consensus that July 17th is preferable to the 10th? Is it? All right.
So, we're gonna? We're gonna get it on there. I think the next two, we've already talked about. And then, the last one is part of the motion.
Well, so, bullet three is correct without the question mark.
Correct.
Except that it's in the second bullet, right?
Is it?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Oh, I see, all right.
And I would.
I see, all right.
Is the? Well, hold on a second. You needed the language on compelling reason.
Well, maybe there is something in there. There's compelling need.
Okay.
Where's my request that we got to get the?
And that was what I was?
Schools that have Confederate names on them.
Yeah, so that's the get, consult with George Mason? Or solicit?
That was different.
I would say, direct the superintendent to.
Right. No. And sending it to officers' names. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. And then, will you please give? Yeah. Okay, and?
Okay, that's Confederate association.
Association.
Could I ask, so then we run into, sorry. We want to be specific because we do have place names that were plantations. So, like, right, so do we mean have Confederate names that have, that are associated with Confederate?
Doing Confederate surnames?
People, Confederate officers or soldiers? How's that? Because I think we're gonna.
I'm sorry, if we're gonna define what a compelling need is at some point, I think we have to have the Confederate associations. We can decide that a Confederate association that's a place isn't compelling and that a name is. But that's, you have to have the scope of the problem. You don't get to predefine the scope of the answer before you even answer the question of whether it's compelling.
Maybe we should ask the superintendent how you feel about that last bullet. Is that something that you think, you know, staff has plenty to do? Could they come up with this?
I thought the brief history was gonna be, is that where we're reaching out to? Right, okay. And are we looking at having George Mason or somebody help us with that? Is that the piece you were directing us to?
If you want to.
How many? How many? There's 30, but there was 30-some altogether, right? Okay.
So, Megan, you're actually confined, now you're doing the compelling need statement, which is fine if everybody around this table is.
I'm trying to just be clear with what I proposed, and if board members want to support it or not. I said, we have multiple schools that are named after Confederate officers. And whether you want to go with Confederate soldiers, but those are the ones, I'm not going after plantation associations. At this point, let's just go with, if they were named after someone who was Confederate, they fought with the Confederacy, let's get their brief history so we understand, do they have any connection to Fairfax County beyond their service to, beyond the battles they fought?
Let's just vote on that, and then we'll go to Ms. Schultz's. Surnames.
Yeah.
Named after Confederate soldier.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, you had one regarding bringing in GMU as a resource?
Yeah. Could we, I'm sorry, but we haven't actually voted on this one, right?
We need to get the next steps up before we vote on them, Ms. Evans.
I thought we had voted on number one and number two.
If we can go ahead, we can go ahead and vote on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Actually, I'm sorry. Our practice as a board is to get the next steps up, and then, once the next steps are up, we vote on whether we're adopting the next steps or not. That is traditionally what we have done. That is, that is traditionally what we have done, that is our practice.
Ms. Schultz, could you craft language for the-
So, so, so the, the language that I was looking for is the language that Tom Davis had offered to get, have George Mason and their history professors give us a synthesis of this information, so that we have a third-party set of information before us, in addition to the two sides that, the resultant two sides. I'm sorry?
What information are you requesting from George Mason?
It was whatever he had originally offered, which was, he said, look, if you want to have George Mason, you know, look at this information and give you a synthesis back as a board, so that you have some, you know, a, a, a perspective of academia, in addition to two sides of volunteers, I think that that's a good idea.
So you're requesting George Mason University to do a synthesis of the two sets of reports, as well as any other information, and come back with?
I'm not, I'm not coming up with it, it's what he offered to us, so.
I apologize, I must have been asleep at the wheel when he did it, so if somebody can pull up the information of what Mr. Davis suggested.
Can we vote on, can we vote on the last two bullets? And, and if we don't have enough information on the last one, can we just put it off and vote on it another time? Because we're running out of time.
So only when we come down to the one next up that I'm asking for, we're running out of time.
Elizabeth, you don't have enough information.
That's fine.
Elizabeth, I'm trying to get-
This is exactly why we didn't, why the two hours that we allotted for this morning wasn't enough time.
I think the final bullet needs to reference Jeb Stewart. I mean, I think, we can't ask George Mason to give us a historical synthesis of the entire Civil War.
Correct, you're absolutely correct.
I'm not against it, but I can't vote on it right now without more information, that's-
I can't vote on any of this without the information, so.
I'm going to ask our clerk to find the information from the meeting in which Mr. Davis had testified, I think it was a video testimony, if I remember correctly, and if we can find that and try to capture what he said in it, we can come back to that issue at the end of the day. Is that fair? So if we can go ahead and vote on the bullet above it, and then I will, as a close-out, come to this last bullet at the end of the day. We're going to vote on it. All those in favor, please raise your hand in directing the superintendent to obtain brief histories on all Fairfax schools that are named after Confederate soldiers.
As described in the video testimony.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Yes.
Not to, it's a small point, but in the previous bullet, I think what we, it's craft motion and follow-in motion to change names, to change, for July 17th work session, we're not voting on that, it's a for, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, good clarification.
And can I suggest one thing?
And, and are the motions only to change the name? I mean, are those the only motions we're expecting?
That's the motion I'm creating, if anybody wants to-
People want to create a separate motion, those will all be discussed at that meeting. And so, Mr. McElveen, please.
So I just have one very tiny thing for the first one. I think this should be in the form of a formal letter that is similar to what's been sent on the joint budget stuff on retreats, when we request those things to the board, because we want it on record that we've requested then.
I agree, shall we take a vote on a letter?
Via, via a formal letter.
Okay, so we'll have a letter, thank you. And the last bullet, we should, are you going to find it, Ms. Melberg, or are we going to just amend it to say RE Jeb Stewart?
As described in his video.
Yeah, okay, then if we could add to it as described in Mr. Davis's video testimony.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders, I'd, I'd like to speak to this last bullet.
Please do.
I'm opposed to this for several reasons. First of all, we can't have GMU history professors do anything. We, you know, they don't work for us. We, we could make a request if we chose to, but I certainly don't want to suggest that we're going to be, that this, that any of our decisions, this could take forever for them to do things. We don't know if they agreed to it, how long would it take them, and we've decided already that we are going to take a vote on July 27th. So if we wanted to make a request, I, and why GMU? I, you know, why GMU? So, you know, is, I, anyway, I just, I, I don't agree with doing this particular thing at this time.
So I, Ms. Hines, and then Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I would only add to that, that we have no idea what it would cost, and so I can't support it.
Ms. McLaughlin.
So someone who Congressman Davis had been working with on this issue, he was helping to clarify, and, and this reminded me that, yes, this is exactly what he said, because of his relationship, which, is it Board of Visitors, is it prefector, what's his title? For, the, the rector, right, as rector of George Mason University, he was offering to make them available to us in providing third-party, objective, historical information about Jeb Stewart. So I think what we could do, with people being concerned about time, concerned about cost, is why not at least have, whether it's Dr. Lockhart speak with Congressman Davis, Ms. Evans speak with Congressman Davis, but someone could just say to him, you publicly offered in testimonial, you certainly shared with board members and the public that in your role as rector, that you could make available some George Mason professors to provide this objective, historical context, why don't we just have the bullet saying, direct the superintendent to speak with Congressman Davis about his offer? And then they can see what he thinks he can do in this timeline.
So is your concept that maybe invite them to the work session?
No, Ms., no. What I said is, he's offered for them to make themselves available to get this third-party objective information, historical information about Jeb Stewart. So if we go back to him and say, we now have until July 17th, if you're offering to have some of your scholars look at this issue surrounding Jeb Stewart, we would certainly welcome to have some of that objective information about the history of Jeb Stewart and the role that he played and his relationship to Fairfax County, for free.
Before we take a vote, Ms. Strauss?
I believe that in the very substantive reports that we have received today on both sides, I think that there's been a tremendous amount of factual, historical information that's been submitted to us on Jeb Stewart. It is historically there in the record. I'm not sure that I need any more in order to ultimately make a decision. I think the committee has done an excellent job of providing the historical record around Jeb Stewart. I don't see that that is a problem one way or another, that record is there. So I would not support going back and asking for the record again, I think we have it.
Although it said, you were going to have the last word, Mr. Moon and Ms. Schultz, and if I can give you each 30 seconds.
I just wanted to note that I agree with Mrs. Strauss on that point, that if former Congressman Davis feels that additional information would be beneficial to this board, and he has a relationship with George Mason professors, he can certainly ask them and provide us, you know, we receive information from public, anyone, welcome, but, you know, I don't want to formally this board making that request.
Ms. Schultz.
So we're not going to take up someone who's given us the offer of having an academic synthesis of this information. I just want to make a point, that you want to talk about process and policy, that we're only going to take information that was presented by two different sides that have taken a point, but we're not going to go and take up academia on the offer. Now we're going down a road that we're, if we, if we don't vote for this, that's fine, we'll take the vote, but then we're choosing not to be informed, I think we can send him a letter from the board that says, you very nicely offered it, yes, of course, we would be willing to take you up on it. If we're not even willing to do that, what we're saying is, no thanks, we're going to go ahead and make a decision of whatever we're going to make, and we don't need even, even an academic read.
So are we amending this?
As an educational organization.
So, so as a, may I suggest modifying your bullet to say, request, send a letter to Mr. Davis, Congressman Davis, requesting a, you know, requesting the information he committed?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
That, by the way, is a preview of a vote.
Okay, so I think we've followed up on all of the, we've voted on all the follow-up actions. I'm going to ask people to take a three-minute break, and we will get back part of our time by moving expeditiously through the remainder of the agenda, and if I can ask staff's forgiveness for taking so much of their time on this issue.